Welcome to the December 5th Select Board Meeting. Please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a note to let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast and livestreamed by our local cable studio. And I'm just going to start with you, Jen, and if everyone wants to introduce themselves, I'll all the way around.
Sure, Jennifer Stacey.
Mark Lim.
I'm Dottie Fulginetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have Connor Reed, our Town Administrator, and Elizabeth Heg, our Executive Assistant. So the first thing that we have is a public hearing for the tax classification hearing.
I'm sorry about that.
Do we have to wait until 6:15?
Yes.
All right. Let's go next to the discussion and vote on contract IT 2023-02 for Bulletproof Solutions cybersecurity assessment.
Sure. So a cash-in contract is a cybersecurity assessment by Bulletproof Solutions. We're on a state contract. They also work with us for a variety of network-related support. This is an independent assessment of the town's security posture from an IT perspective. Try to identify any weaknesses that we may have from the hardware or software perspective and make recommendations to the town on what mitigation steps we should be taking to make sure that we're sure and those things happen staying current. The Information Systems Manager, Mike Till Thomas, here can speak to it in much more detail if anyone has any particular questions. But from a funding perspective, town meeting just funded the capital request for this and shortly after town meeting we'll receive notice that we're receiving a $50,000 state grant to supplement this.
That's terrific.
That's fantastic.
Mike, do you want to come up and make any comments or?
Cool. I'll answer questions. It's kind of self. To me, it's self-explanatory a little bit.
Anyone have any?
It's getting crazy out there. And when you get governments and bad players who are organized crime, they have a lot more time to spend on this stuff than I do chasing them down. So when these forensic guys, they get big, big bucks. So we're just going to try to make this network more secure and try to make sure, you know, try to get ahead of anything that might be on the horizon so we can, you know, protect ourselves.
Terrific. Jen, do you have any questions?
No questions. Just it's really an important space that we put on top of. My husband works in the space as well and it's crazy out there.
It is. It's scary.
Yeah, you think you got it and then it's just amazing how they find opportunities to get in and check people and, you know, so.
How long does this assessment take?
I, when I talked to them, we were planning this whole thing out in the summer, fall timeframe. What I told them I wanted to do was start like around the holidays, knowing that we'd be signing the contract and, you know, town meeting and all of that. And but we, I told them I want to get this thing done by the end of February. So if there's any big things that we got to do, we have those numbers available so we can get it on capital planning for the spring town meeting.
Will this include anything to do with the schools, the network?
Not the schools, no.
No, okay, just town side?
Right, just the school network. My crack and we're already separated from ours. It's not.
Right, we could fire walls in between us and them.
Right, that was kind of where I was going with it. Are they working on anything? Do you know of?
He isn't.
I'm sure they are. We haven't, we didn't check in relation to this contract, but we can circle back. But Mike stays in touch with their director, John Souza. I believe they're largely on Google-based platforms. We're still on Exchange. So there's different systems, very separate management.
Okay. Excellent.
And all their computers are cookie cutter. So he just re-formats everything every year. So through all the same, oh, it's broken, put another image on, done. And we've got all kinds of different images here. Everything's different. Every department has different software. So it's complicated.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think this is really great, too. I mean, we've all seen in the news where certainly they seem to be targeting different municipalities and public safety. So to have this be done proactively now, especially with a grant, it makes it even better. But when we find out, you know, what, if there's any vulnerabilities, where they might be, I think it's a good training for everybody that are the users of this system. And then I think it's really smart to try to get this done now so that you can plan and forecast if they come back and say, you're going to need this kind of new equipment or new software or whatever to get that into the capital budget. We've been very lucky, I think, knock on wood, that we, you know, have had strong firewalls and other protection. But this stuff changes as soon as we look at it. There's going to be more threats that come out. So it's good to have a good relationship with a company like Bulletproof that we can count on, that will be there for us through this whole process.
I agree. We'll also be better than them.
That's right, especially you.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, I would take a vote, a motion to accept contract IT 2023-02 and award it to Bulletproof Solutions for cybersecurity network assessment.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lim.
Barger and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too. We still have a couple of minutes left. So let me do, Connor, do you want to do the DPW one?
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So DPW could not be here tonight, so I will do my best on the next couple of contracts. So the first one, DPW 2023-07, City Electric Supply. This is for Electrical Supplies, including conduit at Well Field 6. This is basically to replace wiring. Well, Well 6 is truly, it's a field of smaller wells and there's a variety of wires, including subsurface wires connecting them that were put in many, many years ago with different standards. There's no conduit for a lot of them. They're sitting around. They're getting old. They need to be replaced. This will be the wiring and the conduit. So there was a healthy capital budget for this. We sought three quotes. City Electrical is the lowest-priced qualified response. So DPW is recommending award to City Electric and so do I.
Okay, and that's for $37,103.81. Any questions?
No.
Does somebody want to make a motion to award that contract, DPW 2023-07, to City Electrical Supply for electric supplies and upgrades to Well Field 6?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lim.
Barger, Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. The next one is discussion and vote for contract DPW 2023-20, Energy Source Installation of Heat Pumps.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So this is a contract for the installation of heat pumps at town offices. Project cost is just shy of $100,000, less about $30,000 pre-approved utility incentives for a contract value of $71,244. This funding is coming from a Green Communities grant. We were recently awarded $89,000 and change by the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division for this project, as well as an EV charging station to be installed at the town offices in the near future. That would be, the EV station will be under a separate contract. This is the town's seventh grant award, bringing the total Green Communities grant funding to about 1.1 million since 2011, which is wonderful that the Chair of Green Communities is here, to here. And so the cost of this product to the town is less than 100,000. So I would recommend award of this contract. I sent some supplementary information from Public Works because obviously we've just wrapped up the majority of the work on a really wonderful exterior preservation and restoration at the town offices. So this is something that's been reviewed with Historic Commission staff as well as the Chair with Public Works. It would be similar to, okay, that's not there anymore. Other AC HEQ units that are in some of the offices in the town hall. It will be, I think, three condenser fans. And to the extent possible, they're going to run the supply lines into near the basement foundation and through walls and ceilings to minimize any kind of visual impact. And we'll be replacing window units that currently hang out of windows, which is a significant improvement. It's also projected to reduce our reliance, not entirely because of the size of the building and the current size of this contract, but it'll reduce our reliance on the fossil fuel-powered baseboard heat, which will obviously reduce our carbon impact and save a four-digit number in utility costs per year.
That's great. Start with you, Jen. Any questions?
No, no questions. Just seeing a lot of action out in the world with heat pumps and it's exciting. I'd be really eager to hear how it actually plays out with the savings and whatnot.
Mark?
No questions.
No questions.
I think that this is really great with the heat pumps. It is, you know, emerging technology. There was an article a few months back about why more people weren't using it in their homes. And MassSave was not offering rebates for these. So they've started to offer rebates for people at home. If you wanted to look for your own house and you contact MassSave, we pay for that by costs that are on our electric bills. And they'll come in and evaluate your house and make recommendations. A lot of times they have really, really low interest or no-interest ways to do things. Everything from replacing your furnace to new windows to new insulation in your attic and walls. And at the very least, they'll exchange all your light bulbs, LED light bulbs, and really give you an evaluation of your home on how you can save energy. And if you've done it before, if it's been a few years, try and do it again because things change and there's different incentives. They also often have things to take away old refrigerators and they pay you for it. So MassSave's definitely good to follow on social media. And this is, this is really great because with the windows being replaced and resealed, the energy efficiency of the building envelope has never been better. And then to put these, these energy-saving heat pumps is really going to be a great way for us to make some good progress on our carbon reduction. So if, Christina, did you have any questions or comments or?
No, I was just thinking I'd like to talk to MassSave and just try to keep up on the, some of their new things that they offer because they change frequently. But I have used the refrigerator.
Me, too.
Awesome.
Excellent. All right. If there's no other comments or questions, if somebody would like to make a motion to award contract DPW 2023-20 to Energy Source for installation of the heat pumps.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lim.
Barger and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. I think we have time for what?
Moving and Storage?
Maybe one more? Moving and Storage?
Sure.
Discussion and vote for contract number 040-FY23 to Isaac's Moving and Storage for moving services to the Blanche A. Ames Elementary School.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. A attached new packet is a contract from PMA, our owner's project manager, managing the Blanche A. Ames construction project. This is a component of that is moving services to take various supplies and things from the three elementary schools that will be being closed over vacation and moving it all into the Blanche A. Ames School.
That's great. We're getting close.
Funded out of the project budget. This was the lowest-priced bid that was responsive and PMA and I recommend approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
It's very exciting because it's real now. It's becoming real. So I'm really excited about it.
Yep, so that little bid amount was $44,404.50. And like Connor said, that is included in the school construction budget. So if somebody would like to make a motion to award contract 040-FY23 to Isaac's Moving and Storage for moving services to the Blanche Ames Elementary School.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lim.
Barger and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, we've got two minutes. The interim note is going to be longer than two minutes.
I think everything else will probably be longer than two minutes.
Yeah. All right. If you just wait out the clock for a second. One thing I didn't mention when we did the Green Communities that I neglected because I went through it so fast is really congratulations to the team for the grant writing. We get a lot of grants through the Green Communities program and the EV charging stations that will come as part of that grant also. It's really exciting for the town to start putting those, putting those out. So thank you to Stephanie and her staff for doing, I think Stephanie is the one or is it TPW?
TPW on Green Communities.
Oh, right. Excellent.
Stephanie assists. We all chip in.
Okay. So Craig, are you ready to read that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Talk slow.
In accordance with Chapter 40, Section 56 of the General Laws, the Eastern Select Board will hold a public hearing at 6:15 PM on Monday, December 5th, 2022, in the Colima Corona Boardroom, Easton Town Offices, 136 Elm Street, Northeastern, Mass. The hearing will include a brief presentation on the issue of allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the next fiscal year. Interested taxpayers will have the opportunity to present either oral or written information on their views. Those wishing further information may contact the Select Board's office.
Excellent. Okay. Robbie, come on up and Wendy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's an updated letter. The only thing is I did realize I did change the date. The Board of Assessors had a Zoom meeting at 4 o'clock today. We're until, oh, almost 5:30.
I hope you were here.
No, I was, I was Zooming.
It was hot side.
So I did not change the date. It still shows the November 30th date from the original. I was having technical difficulties with my computer. Thank God for Mike. I had him down to help me. But then we had, I had to shut down. And when you shut down, it restarts and it's just not.
Sure. And just like to acknowledge Michael McKenna from the Assessors is here in our audience. So thanks for being here tonight and thank you for being available to be in a meeting earlier today to talk about this.
So I'll start as we always do. I'll start with the letter. The single-family values for fiscal year 2023 increased 11%. Condos increased by 14%. Two and three-family homes increased by 10%. Commercial industrial property values had little change. This is not unusual because most commercial industrial properties are under long-term leases. Assess values have been adjusted to reflect market value as of January 1st, 2022 and are based on sales activity in calendar year 2021. The overall value of the town increased by $433,123,981 That is an increase of 10%. The formula for setting the tax rate is the amount to be raised divided by the valuation base times 1,000. The amount that the town is allowed to raise under Prop 2 and 1/2 is the constant in the formula. If values are high, the rate is proportionally lower. And if values are lower, the rate is proportionally higher. The town must raise the amount voted by town meeting regardless of whether values rise or fall. The recommendation from the Board of Assessors is to shift to 1.1 and not to adopt either the residential or the small commercial exemptions. I always get a question, what is the residential exemption? Residential exemptions are usually for communities that have a lot of rental properties. So they give a shift for their actual residents in the town. And the commercial exemption, that's usually if you have less than 10 employees. The bigger problem with the commercial, a small commercial exemption is it helps sometimes the owner of the property, not necessarily the business of the property. And if you have multiple businesses in one, then you don't reach the exemption because you have a higher number of employees. Setting the fiscal tax rate for, setting the fiscal year 2023 tax rate. Eastern by the numbers, values by class. So the residential, as we said, increased, increased 11.58% for a total increase of $423,881. And, oh, sorry. Big numbers. It went from just over 3.65 to $4 billion. So 3.65 billion to four, just over, just under 4.1 billion. Commercial industrial personal property, which is the CIP, that increased a, well, the commercial increased by 0.49%. Industrial, 6.21%, and personal property, 1.02% for a total of 1.91%. Single, oh, the assessment date is January 1st, 2022. That's why we use calendar year 21 sales. People always ask, well, the house down my street just sold yesterday. That's not for another year. That's what we're looking at for fiscal '24 values. Single-family average assessment went up 11% to $570,000. Two-family average assessment went up 10% to $512,600. Three-family average assessment went up 11% to $505,700. And condos went up 14% to $306,400 with the overall residential value increase of 11.58%. It was 5.21 in FY '22. CIP values. Commercial and industrial properties are basically, they're valued by income and expense. This approach takes a property's net operating income and divides it by a determined capitalization rate to determine the value. Personal property is assessed each year. Everything's looked at every year. Personal property, the form of lists are filed. We do a certain percentage of, well, we do so many in the town each year. And we set the values based on market value.
So personal property is like equipment, furniture, things like that?
Right. Depending on how the company files, I mean, if you're an individual, you pay on everything. When I say everything, it means if you have a scattered rub, that's taxable. If you're a partnership, it's different things. If you're incorporated, the state gets their money first and then we get a few other items. If it's manufactured, there is no personal property manufacturer. Well, only why is it underground condos? And the bottom numbers are just a repeat from the last slide. How the levy is calculated. So you take 2022's levy of $61,304, 61, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. The amended growth, the amended growth is $289. And that's basically for this year. That was basically any difference with the pilots and the TIF. Every year, I get as close as we can. We either have to abate or we have to do an additional assessment on it just so that it reaches the number that it's supposed to reach.
That couldn't be 289. It would be 289,000, right?
No, no. No, 289,000.
$289,000?
Yeah. I got lucky. So the subtotal.
Just to be clear, that's not saying growth in fiscal '22 was that much money. That is a final accounting for the growth basis.
That's additional.
On what our forecasts were. So lucky is a very nice way to say very accurate, right? The forecast was within a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
The subtotal was $61,304,558. So you add 2 and 1/2%, which is $1,532, is $532,614. Growth this year was $654,500, $654,000, $654,548 for the new levy limit of $63,491,720. That was an increase of 2 point, just under 2.2 million, 3.57%. The debt exclusion for FY 2023 was $4,68,376. That was an increase of just over 1.6 million. So the maximum allowable levy is $67,560,96. The next slide is the levy composition that shows, that shows the total percentage of residential and open space and CIP. Residential increased this year by about 0.9%. And CIP decreased by about 0.9%. Did you want to take that one?
Yeah. So this next slide just shows the average single-family tax bills, the, what the values have been over the last five years, what the average bill has been and what the tax rate has been, and just shows the changes. So from 20, if we adopted a single rate, the average single-family tax bill would go from basically seven, almost $7,900 to about $8,400. So it's a difference of $523.36 or a 6.69% increase if the rate was kept at a single rate.
Do you want that? The next, the next slide is about the core communities and how we compare. Many of these communities have a split rate. I think actually all of them. Marshfield doesn't.
Ashland.
And Ashland doesn't. Everyone else has a split rate. It also shows the amount of the CIP shift. Canton, $1,945, a shift there from residential over to commercial on their average value. Chelmsford is $324, Denham, $1,559, Foxborough, $475, Mansfield, $422, and Walpole, $363.
So basically, I mean, if you, if you compared us to the core communities from the last time we did the community comparison report and you adjusted the communities that shift their rates to a single tax rate and compared them to Eastern, then we would have the second lowest tax bill out of them if everybody had the single rate. But because they're able to shift that, we're actually like the sixth lowest out of nine because they can do the shift. And then over on.
The sixth highest, right? With the single rate.
The sixth highest.
Right. We are six out of nine.
Yes, yeah, sorry. So, and then over on, you know, the last two columns basically show you what the difference in the rates are. So, I mean, Canton, you know, their commercial rate is like more than double what the residential rate was. And this is based on last year because not everybody's got their tax rate set yet. And, you know, Denham is 1335 versus 2793. So there is, there is quite a difference in these other communities. They are able to, to make that, a larger shift.
Excuse me. So this would be the shift options. There are smaller amounts that we could look at. But if we put them all on, it's a lot. So usually I go by every 5%. So at 1%, it would be 1476 shift, 1476 rate. At a 1.05, residential would be 1467 and commercial would be 1550. At a 1.1, residential would be 1458 and CIP would be 1624.
This is from a sheet you have.
Yep.
Yeah, we also looked at 1.15, but. Yeah, we also looked at one point one five, but that, that was a much more dramatic increase on the commercial end. So, in, in looking at the, you know, what impact the shift would have, like on the average single-family tax bill, we looked at from two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-two, and then the various scenarios. So if a single tax rate was adopted, again, the annual increase on the average single-family tax bill would be five point, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars or six point six nine percent. With a shift at one point oh five, it would save the average tax bill fifty-one dollars. The one point one, you'd be looking at a hundred dollars, you know, over, slightly over a hundred dollars. That's, that was a much more meaningful, you know, impact to the, to the residents. The other thing that we looked at too, you know, we wanted to look at, you know, this is, this is the first year that we're seeing a meaningful increase in the levy due to the debt exclusion for the Blanche Hames Elementary School. And so we wanted to look back at, you know, what did we project at this time before, when we were looking at, you know, getting the project approved versus, you know, what the actual numbers were. And, and the numbers are, they're really pretty close. So what we had projected at that time, based on what the average single-family home and, and the valuation of the community was at that time, the impact was going to be around four hundred and ninety dollars for fiscal twenty-three. This year, with a one point one shift, you're looking at about five hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. So it's about eleven dollars more than what we had projected. And typically, it would have been less, but we ended up deciding to accelerate the borrowing because of the projection of the interest rates increasing. We were advised, you know, borrow as much as you can as soon as you can, because the interest rates are going up every month when the Fed meets and are going to stay up for the foreseeable future. So we decided to bond early so that we could save money over the life of the project or the life of the debt. And then the other thing is, you know, when we looked at, when we borrowed last year, initially when we did the projection, we thought we were also going to borrow and pay more sooner than we've had to. So we had projected that we were going to pay actually, you know, ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents in fiscal twenty-two, more than what we actually paid. So the projection was higher than what it actually was. So there was a savings there, ninety-eight eighteen on the average bill, and then the year before was a small amount, three dollars and eighty-nine cents. So, you know, if you net it out, we're still ahead of the game, and we will, we'll definitely save money over the life of the debt. I mean, we're going to borrow less. Our interest rates are going to be less than what we had projected originally. So there will be, there will be, you know, significant savings over, over the life of the debt.
So this slide shows the amount, the increase of the assessed values for residential and CIP once again. And on the bottom, it's the difference in the shift, if there's no shift. So the tax rate would drop by four point oh nine percent. The residential amount to be raised would increase by seven point oh two percent. And the CIP amount to be raised would drop by two point two six percent.
This, and, and this disparity is really what caught our attention this year. You know, to have such a large increase and then a decrease on the opposite end for commercial, industrial, we really felt that it was, you know, really needed to look at, trying to balance this out a little more to, you know, physically make it more fair.
So what that's saying is that for this year, if we keep it at one and we don't shift it, my tax bill is going to be seven point two percent of an increase?
Yes. Well, that's the overall.
In, in, in the aggregate for the whole town.
In the aggregate, yes.
The, the forecast for the average single-family was in the, you know, high fives or high sixes on a percent basis. It's, it's tied to the value of your property. So we thought this-
So that's for the average property value?
Yes, for the average property value. So what we did here, and we thought this was the best demonstration for you as policymakers was to look at, it's, it's your choice on how you shift the tax rate. If you stick with a single rate, which we historically always have, because of the enormous disparity and the kind of historic amount of value growth from a residential sector, the rate's going to drop by four percent. But the double-digit percent growth in value for residential property, year over year, is going to result in residential tax growth at seven percent. At the same time, that commercial taxes would be cut by two and a quarter.
But I'm just thinking practically for, for people, you know, if my house was reassessed this year and I got a big assessment, adjustment, it could be a really big impact. Am I right?
Of course. So Wendy, can you go back a few slides? This, no, go forward one, I'm sorry. One more. There you go. This is what you're, we're talking about, Dottie, is if you look at the four columns, am I right? You have two thousand twenty, one point oh oh, two thousand twenty-three, one point oh five, one point one. At the bottom, that will show the difference, right? So the average, if you keep a single rate, the average single-family with the average value at five seventy thousand would see an increase of about six point seven percent. If you shift to one point oh five, that increase drops to five point six six. If you shift to one point one, it drops to five point three. So there's, and it's always very frustrating, but there's no way to, to say certainly on TV, this is exactly the rate that everyone's bill will change, because a lot of it does fluctuate. The tax rate, as we're already talking about, is going to drop. No matter what the board does, the tax rate for residents is going down. Almost no one's tax bill is going to go down because the values are going up. And that could be from an assessment, that could be from a recent sale. A lot of it is just going to be the general market conditions where values are going to get plugged in and people's values are very much growing, which is a, a good thing in some sense. But on the flip side, that coupled with the relatively stable commercial values, that, again, this is why we worked much more closely this year. The disparity in the value growth really would lead to, if you kept a flat rate, shifting more of the revenue growth onto residents while CIP revenue would actually be cut.
Okay.
So this starts to get into the detail, showing that again, a bit kind of ten-thousand-foot view. So this is a shift of one point oh five. So if you jump down to the bottom, look at residential tax value, again, revenue, that's for the entire community. So now that would go up by six point three four percent. And now instead of being cut, commercial, industrial, personal property revenue would grow by two point six four. So you're still not totally even, but you're better off than the initial, where one's going up by seven and one's going down by two and a quarter.
Right.
And then here, this next slide shows the same thing with a, a one point one shift, where you have residential revenue growing by closer to five point seven, CIP going up by about seven and a half. And then here would be a one, a shift of one point one five, where you would see residential revenue grow by about five percent and commercial growth by over twelve. Which is why internally, when we were looking at this week, felt one point one, particularly when you look at the five-year growth, which I think is one of the next slides, made a lot of sense, and the, the board assessors met today and spent a lot of time reviewing this as well, and ended up at about one point one. Wendy, if you want to jump back in on showing, I think it's, it's particularly important that this, this past year, as everyone knows, with residential values, has been unprecedented. And so there was already a trend, especially in Easton, residential values growing very healthily. But this, this last year was really, really separated that. So if you could just speak about that, Wendy, please.
Yeah, so I mean, we didn't, we didn't want to just look at this year and say, oh, well, you know, everybody's going to get a tax cut. We, we, we looked at, you know, what's happened in the past, because we didn't, we didn't want to see commercial have a large increase and then, you know, be offset by this, by this decrease. And, and so what we did see, though, is that, you know, over the last like five years, I mean, you can see the revenue here for residential, if you kept the rate single, it, the increase is a twenty-one percent versus five. You know, if you make the shift to the one point one, you know, residential's still higher, but, you know, commercials at fifteen percent, you know, nights, you get nineteen point eight one and fifteen point nine six. Though, you know, that's closer.
And so again, this is a function not of tax rate, right? Because you've had a single rate the whole time. But just looking at the proportional value of you valued all property in Easton of residential versus CIP back five years ago, and what that yielded for revenue, where it came through two thousand twenty-two. Again, you can see there, there was already some disparity through twenty-two. Residential revenue had grown by about thirteen percent and change. CIP was just under eight percent. But it's really this past year taken with that five-year history where that disparity gets incredibly large. Not just on a revenue perspective, as Wendy has said, from the kind of twenty-one percent revenue growth for residential and just over five, which is actually down, right? Because it's, it's flat if you keep a single rate. The values themselves, you're looking at over thirty-one percent increase in value for residential properties, at the same time, commercial's fourteen. So that's really what drew our attention to dig in much, much more here and, and make this recommendation, which we've never done, and I don't think the assessors have ever done, either.
It's not something we take lightly. I mean, we are going to look at this every year. We felt like this, this would, you know, just really just kind of help to smooth out that disparity this year.
Okay. Is that the end of the presentation?
The last is back to the table, the tax shift options again.
All right. Starting with questions. Mark, you look like you've got about ten questions.
You're ready. I can feel it.
But, you know, we, we, we've talked about this for years, and it was always, the idea was that we weren't going to entertain this or we weren't at, at the point of entertaining it, because we wanted to keep the rate the same so we would attract business to come in, because it's attractive to have a lower rate for business, and we're, you know, trying to economically grow in, in certain areas. And it seems to me like values have increased so much, the taxes will increase so much, that it will become such a burden for so many people that our, our back is kind of against the wall to search for every way to alleviate that burden. And I, I commend this, whoever, you know, whoever you guys approached this, thought of this. I think it's, it's a great idea. My, my concern is that one point one isn't enough. You know, one point one five, I understand that it puts a lot more on the commercial. But if I look at the rates for one point one five, the residential rate's fourteen point four nine, and the CIP, CIP rate is sixteen point nine seven, if I'm correct. I was trying to peel stuff out of there as it was coming out. And that's not a big, that's not very far apart. And when I look at other communities that do have a split tax rate, and I know this is something they work towards, nobody, no community switches and then like turns the water all the way up on, on the CIP. I, I get that. You kind of, you make the switch and you work towards that, you know, the, the difference in numbers. You don't do it out of the gate. But I, I still think that that's a small difference. So my question is, what are the valid reasons to not entertain a larger, you know, one point one five? What do you guys think?
Well, I will say that commercial properties have a much greater, you know, individual value than the average single-family. So, I mean, they, you know, a single taxpayer is going to pay a lot more. This, this five seventy is just there to compare for the average single-family tax bill, but, but your average, you know, commercial property is going to be more than that. So, you know.
Right, but I-
Yeah, we're just looking to smooth things out.
I completely understand, you know, but I also think the larger the commercial property, the larger the, the revenue that they're, they're generating. You know, you don't have a large commercial property and revenue that's similar to a small commercial. It's usually relative. I'm not saying it's exactly, but, you know, if you have a massive property, your revenue's probably a lot larger than a smaller guy. So percentage-wise, for them, on their books, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there as a thought.
It's a good question, and so I think you're, you get different answers depending on who you ask, right? So some of it is, is kind of policy preference, right? Back to your point of maintaining a single rate. We are still an overwhelmingly residential community, right? I think you can look at the, the splits surrounding us, literally, I think, on all sides, and have some comfort that even if you shifted on any of these-
Exactly.
We still have a competitive advantage, and there's all sorts of other intrinsic values. In Easton, there's other economic values in Easton that are not conveyed as simply as a tax rate for a business. I think to answer your question more narrowly on what's, what's, what's a reason maybe not one point one five? So, you know, Dottie brought up, if, if you're a resident, and what I hope no one takes from this discussion is people are all getting tax cuts, because we're talking about cutting the relative increase. So it's still an increase, but it would soften that. Not that we don't want that, but just that, as we all know, in this room, you know, for better and for worse, because of a variety of factors outside of our control, the state constitution, the way funding works at the municipal government, our revenue growth comes from property taxes. So as far as why not go to a one point one five or one point two, the dynamic that Dottie brought up, that even if we, if the rate goes down four percent, five percent, depending on the value, the, the rebal schedule for an individual house, you still may get a, a jump, but quite a healthy one. That can be, and Robbie, jump in if I start making mistakes, doubly true for commercial properties. So because commercial properties, assessed values are tied to net operating income, which are usually informed by leases, which are multi-year and much more stable than the residential market. When we were talking about this internally, we were thinking, okay, well, there may be, so holding everyone equal at a single rate, a, a lot of commercial properties would see taxes flatline or get cut. However, there are some commercial properties that, just like a house, go through a revaluation because of a new lease or something, where they have not just one or two years of kind of backlog value now getting brought on the books. It's usually what, three, five? So they may have a value jump of twenty percent in, in a year with the, the tax rate going down. Their taxes are going up double-digit percentage anyway. So the greater the shift, the more you are potentially exacerbating that. Those are not everyone. Those are potentially outliers. I, Robbie did a really great analysis, and we thought we were starting to send too much, so we, I didn't forward this, of basically the outliers. Who would be looking on the commercial side of a larger than four thousand dollar tax increase? There was less than a dozen or fewer properties in all of Easton. And they were very, very large properties. We're talking Target, grocery stores, these are, they're valued in eight-plus digits. But there could be smaller businesses, to your example, where a one point one shift may, depending on their values, if their values are relatively static from fiscal twenty-two to twenty-three, that may be large, kind of not perceptible. But if they have a few years of backlog coming online on their value this year and there's a shift, it could stick out more. So that, but doesn't mean it, you shouldn't or can't do it.
Right, I understand. It's just information to factor in.
To, to be sensitive to.
I, it's such a balancing act, because I'm so concerned with really the older community in town that's on fixed income. Because there's, there's so many people that are retired that live in this town, and this is, this is going to knock them out of their seat. That's a concern over here. On the other side, we need business. And we, you know, we don't want to draw in the business community or have existing business in the community and then turn around and turn up the water on them. You know, too much. And that's what I'm weighing right now. Where's the greater concern, the greater need, who can aff-
If you look at the difference between the one point one and the one point one five, for the residential, it's a fifty-one dollars decrease. But for commercial, you're looking at four hundred-plus dollars.
Assuming it was a commercial property.
On the five seventy, so if you take, now, that's, what did I say? Four, let's say four hundred. So four hundred on five seventy, most of the commercial is a lot more than the five seventy. So looking at four times that, now you're increasing it sixteen hundred, and so on and so forth, compared to two hundred on a-
But it's really, it's a value.
But it's not linear. You know, I, I don't, I don't look at it so easily comparable like that, because, for the single, for example, right, you have a residence. It's somebody who's retired on fixed income. So they only have X amount to work with. A business, on the other hand, is for profit. They generate money, and in, in times, they generate more money at the charge higher prices, and it really passes through. I'm not minimizing the difficulty that, that they might encounter. But for somebody on a fixed income, they have no options. There's, it's, it's spend less so you can pay your tax bill. For a business, it's, you have the opportunity to make more. And to, you know, compare it dollars-wise, it, in my belief, it's not, it's, you, you can't. Because I can't compare a widow who lives in a, in a house and her tax bill to a business generating money and say, you know, they pay seven thousand dollars and this business pays this much. It's, to me, it's, it's relative, and that's, you know, that context is important. It's, to me, it's relative and that's, you know, that context is important.
I agree and I think something that's worth noting here as far as the increased associate project is that this is basically like within a percent or so of what we forecasted three years ago. And we anticipate that when the project is done, because if the project is meaningfully on a budget, that some of those, correct, I'm wrong, when you borrow and costs upfront, that, that annual cost of a debt exclusion will actually dip below what it is now. So there will be some relief, you know, coming in that form. And I think another thing that's worth considering is although this feels like a very significant, you know, policy shift because the town has always been a single rate, once you do this, you are not bound to stay at one.
Mm-hmm.
And I think moving forward, we will look much more closely and perhaps it's something, you know, the board, the select board wants to consider, the board of assessors wants to consider is we can look at this kind of aggregate revenue generation per, on every single year and say, you know, we think of kind of virtuous thing to do is to try to get those increases to be as close to each other as possible, right? Rather than, well, it's a single rate. So there are other things we are, the tools we have to try to reduce some of that impact. But no, at the end of the day, we're on fixed income, we're retired, we're in a high-value single-family home, it's going to be expensive. You know, Deputy Director Honan is here tonight to talk about some of the financial programs that have been growing to assist with this. We've invested a lot of ARPA money to do a lot of meaningful payments to folks on fixed income to assist with these things, but there's no way around the fact that it's tough and that's why we're trying to be very sensitive to it.
Well, I think just by introducing this, you are sensitive to it. So by virtue of this discussion happening.
Wanda. More questions, John?
No, I just, I, you know, having been on the budget committee for many years, I know that this is a big decision in terms of whether to make this change and how to proceed with it. And I was steering direction where Mark was in terms of like, how big can we go with shifting? Because, you know, I'm also worried about folks on fixed incomes and the impacts of job loss and other things right now that are so much uncertainty. But I think there is some comfort in the fact that we can look at this again in a year and be really on top of it and reassessing and, you know, continue this discussion in a meaningful way. And I do take some solace in the fact that there are a lot of programs and resources out there that can help alleviate some of that burden for folks who are most vulnerable to this impact. So, no questions, just a general comment, but I think it's very thoughtful and applaud the effort.
Yeah, I appreciate the effort they put in, particularly for the folks that Mark and I always talk about, folks on fixed income in this town. When we looked at the stuff for other towns in terms of a split rate, there was a significant difference between what we're proposing, what you're proposing for commercial versus what they are charging for commercial.
Yes, can we go back to that slide?
So the fear that may have come up at one point about, well, would businesses leave town if we do, if we increase the rate?
Those two last columns on the right show those rates.
Right. And the fact that our rate would be significantly less, I don't anticipate, and I could be wrong, but I don't anticipate that businesses in Easton, that have been here for a while, are going to say, oh, I got to move to Ashland or I got to move, because the rate is higher than what we're proposing.
Even in your point, with the $16.97 at 1.15, 1697 is still lower than the CIP rate in any other community, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. But at the same time, the mentality of when you make this switch, you don't just turn up the water right away, you kind of introduce it, see how it goes. But, but your point is still valid. It's still lower by a lot.
By a considerable amount.
And even the towns that are right next to us that aren't on there, like Stoughton's fiscal '22, commercial CIP rate was $24.20. West Bridgewater was $29.06. Brockton is 2818.
1697 is not bad.
No, that's right.
Rainham is 2029.
It's not.
So the communities right around us are pretty high.
It's also about the percentage of-
I'm sorry, just for E-CAP, could you name it?
I'm on the board of assessors. It's also about the percentage of commercial that they have in these different towns also. I think we're at just over 10%.
10.75.
So I mean, if you do a larger shift, you're also going to put a lot of burden on 10% of the companies that live, that work in this town, that have a business in this town. And 90% of them are small businesses. So, you know, it's with a heavy hat that we recommended the shift, but I mean, to kind of get disparities back to where it should be. I think if you go higher, you're going to put an unburden on a lot of these businesses, which are also, if I'm wrong, they've also done the sewer vetements. So I mean, we're looking at companies that have already outlaid a lot of expense and now we do a shift. If you do a higher shift, then all of a sudden you're going to get, I mean, an unfair shift.
But I would, I would have to agree that it's a high shift and I don't think it's a high shift to go 1697 because it's still considerably less than every other community. It's a change, agreed, so it's a shift. But the suggestion that it's a high shift, I think it's a moderate shift. And that's just subjective, obviously, we can agree to just, you know, whatever.
I'm just looking at it on the, as from the assessment point, I mean, it's always by rule, you have to be around between 14 and 20% to do the shift.
Right, we've talked about that forever, right?
I mean, that's where you, all of a sudden you start to put a bigger shift onto a smaller percentage of businesses. I mean, we have, what, 136 commercial?
We have commercial 226 and industrial 116.
Right. And this also goes after the chapel, too. The shift also hits the chapel and it's like a lot of farm.
Understood. I just, I consider the weight of the burden on certain groups of people in town who pay a residential tax bill versus the weight of the burden on a business community. They're both, they're both a burden, but I think it's more burdensome to somebody who doesn't have an opportunity to generate more money to pay a higher tax bill because they are on a fixed income. It's a, again, it's a balance. I don't say it lightly, you know.
Even if they're not on fixed income, if the median income in Easton is X dollars, you still, I mean, it's still going to be a struggle for people. It's $50,000, $75,000 or whatever it is.
Exactly.
It's still a significant impact on folks. No question about it.
So one of the things that I always worry about is that when you do things for a long time, you get to the, well, this is the way we always did it kind of a phase without a lot of thought and digging into it. And every year, this is usually a housekeeping thing, like, okay, it's just, we're going to vote, it's going to be the same tax rate and it's a math problem. I think that to recognize that this is a real anomaly this year where values have really increased a lot, to be able to dig into it and think about, what is the fairest way that we can accommodate everybody involved? And, you know, probably we won't please anybody or not everybody, but I think that the approach of looking at it to be thoughtful, not to go to the extreme high, you know, there's got to be some relief across the board. I think the 1.1 is a good way to address that and I think that to do it for one year, where, you know, we could always change it back again. But I think it's worthwhile to have these kinds of conversations so that we can look at it and so that people know that we are putting thought into this, we are being sensitive and thoughtful about people. When we talk later about some of the programs that are available for, you know, some of our older people, they were concerned about this. We hear it at town meeting. We've really, I think we've been incredibly intentional about thinking of that in everything that we do. We appreciate that people supported the schools, older people. And like Connor said, we are not off in what we had already estimated that this was going to happen, but if the home value fluctuated greatly, it translates a little bit differently for people.
And if I could add, Dottie, I think we can not guarantee, but we can feel pretty confident, we're going to be having the same discussion again next year because remember, this is-
That's the only thing that's keeping me in the 1.1.
This is driven by calendar year 21 sales and this really speaks to how incredibly strong the housing market is in this region and in Easton in particular. I get the monthly reports from MLS for mass realtors and through this, through last month, so 11 months into the year, the year-over-year value increase in sales is still, it's 11-plus percent compared to the year we're talking about right now. Now, I know it's not one for one, but those things inform one another. Yes, Robbie, so it's, it's very likely we're going to be looking at a dynamic very similar to this again next year where residential values are continuing to appreciate at just, I don't even know-
Historic levels?
Historic, I don't even know if it's ever been seen at this level, not in my career, but, so this discussion's going to continue and we'll be able to look at and refine. Of course, it is up to the board. I do appreciate that the assessors pulled together today to kind of drill down on that. But this is, this is a dynamic. We have long looked at that kind of 80-20, 85-15, but even that, that kind of rule of thumb comes from a period of time where this wasn't happening. This was not, it was not normal to see residential values grow at such an astronomical rate. So, so you, we have always done it flat rate, but you can adjust it as you move forward moving into the future and I expect we will based on this.
I also worry about for a lot of the commercial entities, especially for small businesses, that increase does translate to staff and hours for employees. And if you have local businesses, you may have people who live in town-
Completely.
Who may lose their jobs or may lose their income. So in some ways, that $50, which is awful to think about, you know, the impact it has on someone who has a fixed income, but if there are programs in place that set that and it saves people's jobs, that's the balancing act to me right now that I worry about because, I mean, small businesses are still getting crushed by supply chains, by increased costs for everything. So, you know, thinking about it as a small business impact, that's where, that's where I'm just kind of like, okay, that is the balance number, even though I want to go higher, everybody wants to go higher. But I just don't know that it's the responsible thing.
It's funny because for all the reasons to stay at 1.1 and not go higher with commercial, like that same argument can be applied to a resident.
Yeah.
Supply chain, inflation, like that impacts them too, price of commodities. And I look at, you know, if you work in a store, if you're of working age, you always have an opportunity to generate more income in some way. But if you're 80 years old, you have no opportunity. You're on fixed income.
Yeah, I understand.
You can't pick up a second job or get a new skill or, you know, you can't supplement that.
But that's why those programs that we've been learning about and see come through are so critically important right now.
They are.
And I hope we can do more in that space to help these folks and alleviate disparities. I don't know where to answer here.
I know, I know, I know.
I don't know where to answer.
I mean, put it this way, 1.1 or 1.15 is a step in the right direction regardless of which way we go.
So my hearing that there's a consensus right now to go to 1.1 and agree with the assessor's recommendation?
Yeah, I would, I would be in that camp.
I will. If there was a consensus to go to 1.15, I would be fine with that as well, but it doesn't sound like there is.
Well, I think that the assessors are experts on this. Mike, you're an expert on this. No, but seriously-
Yeah, please don't take what I'm saying as a minimization of your expertise at all.
I've been on the board for nine years now. I've always tried to look and see if we could do a shift to-
I'm sorry, could I-
Oh, sorry.
Just for E-CAP.
To try to help the residents, but it was never prudent at the time because our numbers, and I think our numbers last year were around 11, 11.5% had gone down. So it's like, but it's also you've got to try to do what's right for the residents.
Right.
And, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a numbers game and it's like if you go too high, is that going to put too much of a burden on the residents? If you go too low, then-
So, what a conundrum.
One of the issues also is that it's all going to hit us either way.
Yeah.
It's either taxes or we're going to pay more fees. Two of the personal property accounts was mess, gas, and I can't remember, Eversource I think it was. By going to 1.1, they're going to increase $38,000 over last year what they paid. That's just coming to all of us.
Who was that?
Utility companies.
Eversource and-
My heart is not breaking.
It's paying for us, though. We paid it.
Believe me.
Not on your electric. Thanks for the community choice.
That's true.
You know, that's what I mean, like, you know, when you make comparison, it's like-
That's the soundbite.
The Assessors Association has been trying to get more value out of them. They've been fighting and going to the appellate tax board to where it's gotten to the point that someone actually made a smart comment. One, the only person getting rich is the attorneys that are representing the different sides. But the taxpayer is paying because they're paying the budgets to support fighting against the cuts in value, but they're also paying because now they're being charged the extra because of the increase in value. So it's like they had hit twice with some of this stuff. So it's hard.
Well, I think that if your department and Wendy, if you've dug into these numbers and you've researched them and the assessors have dug into them and researched them, we've had opportunity to look at them and I know that I've compared them to other communities and you've sent us the data in advance. I feel comfortable with the 1.1. I just, I feel like 1.15 is a little bit too big of a leap for us and let's test it out and see, you know, how it works with it for this year. I think it's reasonable and I appreciate the thought and, you know, like you said, you evaluate this every year.
Right.
It's not an easy decision and I appreciate that you were able to come back afterwards and the three of you take a look at that and make that recommendation.
The other thing too I want to bring up is that, you know, in two years, we're going to, we're going to be in a reval year also, so I wouldn't want to do more than 1.1 this year, you know, maybe not even do anything that, you know, it all depends on how the numbers are going to shake out, but knowing that, you know, in a couple of years, we've got a reval coming on, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be too aggressive in-
Kind of save it.
So the good news out of it is that we were within the estimates of what we thought that the tax, the tax value would be based on the debt exclusion. And the other thing is, this means our property values are high. So it's, you know, the only way that we're going to have lower tax bills is if our property values all decline, which nobody wants that. So, so the numbers are what they are. So with that, if there's no other comments or questions, does anyone want to make a motion on setting the tax rate shift to, it sounds like everybody's in agreement for 1.1?
So will Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for being here, Michael. And I appreciate from the board, this is a robust discussion and I hope the people at home that watch it will see that a lot of thought and good questions came out of this and a lot of thoughtfulness on behalf of all the board members and everybody that was involved.
Thanks, Robbie.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, next we have a discussion and vote for the Clean Water Trust interim loan number MCWT-22-21 to approve the issuance and details of an interim loan from the Mass Clean Water Trust and sign-related interim loan closing documents. That's a mouthful. I hope you can translate that for us, Wanda.
So, we've been here before. The Clean Water Trust is ready to close an interim loan for the town. This will be the first $500,000 of a $1 million borrowing authorization for the septic loan program. The interim loan is issued to the town at 0% interest and then when we finalize the loan, which will be in a couple of years, that comes through at 4%. And this is the money that we use to reimburse people for upgrading their septic systems.
Yeah, so just to add a little bit, and it's germane to what we were just talking about, concerns about cost of living and things like that. This is a program the town adopted through town meeting back in 2012. Thank you, Kristin. Where folks who need to go through a necessary Title V upgrade for their septic can borrow at, particularly now, submarket interest for 20 or 20 years and have it as part of their tax payment rather than having to rely on a HELOC or some other financial instrument to do it. Some of these systems can run 30, 40, 50,000. So this provides, doesn't make the cost go away, but it provides a mechanism for folks to do it at a more spread out and reduced interest rate. Do we, I know you were going to be here, so sorry for putting you on the spot, but do we have a rough idea, how many of these have we issued?
We're nearing 4.5 million that we have- That we have, that we have.
Acted as the agent.
Yeah, spent. Uh, there's four million, uh, borrowed. This is the next five hundred thousand of it. And then we've got another five hundred thousand very quickly after this one.
There's been really strong demand for this. We've gone to town meeting for successive authorizations over the year. Over the years and it's minimal risk to the town government because we act as basically the lending agent, but it gets attached to their property. In the event that there was an issue with payment or things like that, but it's been widely used and it's been well received.
So if your septic system fails and you're in a panic because you have to replace it and come up with all that money at once, this is a really great option for people.
Yeah.
Like there's no income restrictions around it, correct? You live in Easton, you were replacing a septic tank in Easton.
Yep. It's the, it's.
Oh, that's right, or to tie into our sewer system as well. You could use this as basically that, uh, loan to do that.
A low interest law.
A, a low interest loan, uh, spread out as part of your tax payments for twenty years.
If I were, if, if I were in this position, I would absolutely utilize this.
One hundred percent.
So, yeah.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions on this?
And this, if I may just add, this, uh, vote is incorporated, will be incorporated hopefully into the minutes of the meeting by reference. So it's just the abbreviated version that we need right now.
The full vote language is in your packet.
Okay, Craig?
I move to adopt the votes prepared by bond counsel in connection with the town's interim loan note. M C W T dash twenty-two dash twenty-one and incorporate the text of the vote of the select board into the minutes of this meeting.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Good to see you tonight. All right, next we have Health and Community Services Deputy Director presentation, an update on financial assistance programs. And the SERV, Supporting Emergency Relief for Veterans in Easton Fund. Hi Cory.
Hello Cory.
Cory.
There's an HDMI port on the back.
Might have an issue. I only have a USB.
Mike's got it. Oh, you're going to come. Sit here.
Oh, no. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. We have a backup for you. One over and.
Cory, is that HDMI?
This is HDMI.
You have an HDMI port on the back of your computer, not the side, or the back of the, the side piece. See that right there? Looking at it right there.
On the silver thing.
That's great. Thank you, Mike.
What good eyes you have.
You like that?
No glasses or anything. Wow.
Take it after Jamie.
All right, wait back. Very good. Thank you. Thanks anyway, Mike. All right. Thank you all for having me here tonight. Excited to come, um, provide an overview of some of the programs that we offer and have been offering along with, you know, one or two new programs. That we haven't got to talk about too much and mixed in, I will provide a little bit of an update of, you know, what, what, uh, my team and I have been up to, to administer. And, you know, the types of figures that we're working with here. It's some pretty good stuff and I'm always excited to come, come talk about it. One, because it helps me with outreach and, you know, um, I hope the result of this will just be people lined up outside of our doors signing up. For a lot of these programs that we have to offer. Not because we don't have, we don't have enough to do, but, uh, just because we, we love to help people, all of us genuinely do. And it's what we're here for, so. With that, uh, my name is Cory Honan, Deputy Director of Health and Community Services for Financial and Veteran Services. And this is who we are and what we do. So in my side of the house, the Financial and Veteran Services team, uh, we have myself, the Deputy Director. And I am, I act as the V S O in the community. I'm responsible for administering the veterans benefits programs, chapter one fifteen. File and tracking Veterans Affairs compensation claims, all other types of Veterans Affairs benefits. I administer the Senior Veteran Tax Workoff Program. I oversee assistance applications of all kinds. And I preside over patriotic ceremonies that all of you attend, a lot of our residents attend. And I serve as Staff Support on the Taxation Aid Committee. And next we have Tracy Levine. She's our Benefits and Grants Navigator. And she assists applicants with any sort of applications that are out there. Housing SNAP, home repair programs, fuel assistance, referrals to outside agencies, nonprofits, uh, local businesses that want to do good in the community. She is a conduit for basically those things that are, that are available and connecting the residents to that. Then we have Lisa O'Hern, our Administrative Assistant. She completes intake assessments for new applicants, assists with a lot of the chapter one fifteen preparation of the, the, um, reimbursements for medical. Purchases and, um, durable medical equipment, things like that. She prepares client supporting documents for applications to be completed by Tracy or I. So, uh, she is in most cases, and the intent going forward, um, is for her to be that, one of the first initial contacts. And, and kind of explaining to folks what they may be eligible for and preparing them for a meeting with Tracy or I to actually. Complete the applications. And then we have Bruce Henshaw, our Transportation Coordinator and Driver. Schedules and, and coordinates all transportation activity. He's, you know, frontline connection with a lot of folks on, on the bus. And now he's in the office, uh, helping arrange rides to medical transport, um, other essential locations around town, food shopping, food pantry. And, you know, he trains all the drivers on, uh, safety compliance. So a lot of the challenges have actually already been mentioned tonight. You know, residents of all ages are experiencing difficulty affording rent this year more than ever. We've had a, a big challenge with that and it just speaks to, you know, the sign of the times and, and how things are. Not just in Easton, not just in Massachusetts, um, but again, it's, it's being experienced nonetheless. And again, to come back to a common topic tonight, difficulty affording property taxes. And that's been before, you know, that, that's been every year since I've been here, we've, we've dealt with folks who, um, have trouble affording. Things such as property taxes. And again, on the fixed income, it becomes more difficult. And in that, we determine ways to offset household expenses such as utilities and food costs, which are again, another challenge that we're seeing right now. With the rising costs of everything essentially. Another big problem that we're seeing a challenge is difficulty aging in place. Even if folks can afford to stay in their homes, there's major repairs and maintenance that needs to happen that they just physically cannot do. There are opportunities there, um, but, you know, I put here willingness to move is a very sensitive subject. So there's the psychological aspect to it as well. It's not just this methodical, well, you, you'll be rich if you move into an apartment. Well, people are, you know, they're emotionally attached to their homes and, and I totally understand that. So it's, there's a lot to, to unpack with that. And affordable housing, even if we have a successful applicant, wait times are not optimal. The availability is also not, not optimal as well, even in surrounding communities. So these are our opportunities. So clearly we have more opportunities than we do challenges. Depends on the day, but, uh, we have, you know, housing applications, local forty B units. We've had a lot of recent success moving seniors into our housing authority as well as other surrounding communities. So the CHAMP application, which I'll go a little bit into, it's the, uh, community housing application through the state. And you basically check off every and any community you'd like to live in with this general application. It's a great, great tool. And the wait lists vary depending on the town and situations there, but again, there, it's, it's difficult to say. But these things exist, so that's a start. We have a raft program and half program through the state to assist with rental arrears and to prevent eviction. And half is for mortgage arrears. Kind of get into more of these in more detail, just kind of presenting them to you. Property tax abagements, property tax deferrals, taxation aid fund, these are some opportunities to cut costs and savings on. Property tax related struggles. There's critical repair programs and again, other community partners, local businesses, local builders. People who want to do good in the community. And for food, um, food related challenges, we have food pantry, supplemental nutrition assistance programs, SNAP or food stamps as they've been known in the past. Meals on Wheels, there's self-help, fuel assistance. Most folks will, if you qualify for certain other financially guided programs, you will qualify for the R two, the Rate two discount through National Grid. It's a, a discount program offered and it's pretty simple to apply for. Salvation Army Good Neighbor Energy Fund, those are for folks that are slightly over that self-help fuel assistance guideline. As you'll see, a lot of these, uh, benefits use the rule of sixty percent area median income or eighty percent area median income. And if they fail to address that sixty-one or that eighty-one percent, there are other programs that, that fill those gaps, but they are further and farther in between. But this Good Neighbor Energy Fund is an example of that and that's through Salvation Army. And if you ask, they will tell you the more bell ringers they get, the more they can help people. So it really, it, when you see people ringing those bells, that is legitimately. I called the gentleman who administers for our area. He said, I need more bell ringers and, uh, I can give you more to give for oil bills and things like that, so, um, it's just a good example. So, and then the last two bullets, there are a lot of benefits for veterans in Easton. There are. We do a lot. And, um, we're able to come up with a lot of ways to support veterans in Easton. I'm thankful for that. And for the folks that don't qualify for those, whether they're non-veterans or they're not qualifying veterans, there are a lot of generous individuals and organizations willing to help. So I have a, an abundance of people to call on, uh, with those unique situations. So the first piece I'd like to highlight and, and give an update and, and a quick, uh, plug for is chapter one fifteen. It's, uh, they really should come up with a, a common name for this because it doesn't sound like what it is. But it is, uh, Veterans Financial Assistance and it's a means tested, needs-based program that provides financial assistance to veterans or the surviving spouse. Over half of my clients on this program are surviving spouses. Most of them are widows. I don't believe I have one widower right now. We have in the past, but, um, and obviously contact Frothingham Hall at five oh eight two three zero zero six nine zero. For more information on how to apply. It's too much for this, even a whole slideshow. But, um, currently we have twenty-nine recipients. That number has gone down since I have started in twenty eighteen for various reasons. It's not a sign of good or bad or, um, sometimes, I mean, we can pinpoint, okay, it's a good sign because we're getting people on federal benefits. Or we're getting them on other state benefits. And then sometimes, you know, I mean, it's a sad sign when it's due to death like it was in twenty twenty. We lost a lot of chapter one fifteen recipients. Due to COVID, COVID related, uh, other illness related deaths. But the number trends up and down and, and again, it's, it's not, you know, it's not always a, a, a straight correlation to, you know, what's going on. So, and program eligibility is about to change effective one one twenty-three. So for a single applicant, and these numbers have gone up very considerably, especially in the assets where we've seen more stimulus checks, more, you know. Bonuses, things like that, where typically the government wants you to spend that money to stimulate the economy. We, well, I say we, the Massachusetts Department of Veteran Services is not trying to penalize folks for trying to save that money. Right? So they've raised the asset limits a considerable amount. So for a single applicant, the gross income would be two thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars a month or less. And if you're right at those numbers, we can work with it, uh, in the sense that there's, you would essentially be on the program with a slight deductible if you're over that amount. And assets at or below eighty-four hundred and that does not include a car. It doesn't include your first vehicle. It include, if you have a second vehicle or, you know, some, an antique Corvette sitting in your garage, that may be counted as an asset. But your vehicle for transportation, your home.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Your home does not count. And it's, it's liquid assets, money in the bank essentially is, is a good way to put it. But 401K, IRAs, trusts, funds, those things do count. So, um, there's that. And for married applicants, you see the gross monthly income goes up slightly to three thousand fifty-two a month or less. Assets double. So, and the assets should not be a deterrent. If you're within that income, we should speak and at least plan for the future. Because if you're below those incomes and your assets are higher, you know, you may be living off of your savings and, um, depleting that savings. And in addition to that, not to get too into the weeds on this, but if you, you and your, uh, your child who helps you with your finances is on that bank account. The balance of that asset becomes split in half. So there are very many ways, uh, where this program is, you know, it's not adversarial, they're not out to get you. They're not trying to investigate you for, you know, trying to, you know, pull one over and get these benefits. They want veterans to have this benefit that are eligible for it. So please, I'm, I'm glad to, to speak with anyone about this one.
So really the bottom line on that is any veteran, you know, Massachusetts does a really good job to support our veterans.
They do, yeah.
And our town does an incredible job through you. Any veteran that has any questions about any of these programs, call you and you're either going to be able to help them now or, you know, get them positioned.
Absolutely.
If possible.
Yes, yes, definitely. Speak to me if, even if it's just, you're just curious, um, you know, I, I'll talk to anybody regarding that. So this is, this slide is dedicated to our local assistance funds or resources that are unique to Easton. It's a lot, so, uh, sorry, no pictures on this one. But, uh, there's a lot going on here. These are, this is what fills the gray areas where we don't meet our needs through state, federal and some local benefits. But these things are things that are happening, uh, within our department, our team that I'd like to share with you. So the Easton Veterans Discretionary Fund, I believe we're all familiar with that one. You know, the current balance nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-eight dollars, sixty-one cents. That's up from around sixteen thousand when I started in twenty eighteen. And we haven't not been spending it, so that's a good sign. There's been a good, good amount. I received a call, I just received a call today about donating. And, you know, I get steady donations. I have folks that contribute regularly to this. It's used to support emergency solutions, uh, to ensure dignity, independence for Easton veterans and former service members. That's, that's key, former service members, right? So a lot of veterans, um, you know, they, uh, well, let me put it this way. So some National Guard and reservist service members do not qualify as veterans by definition of federal law or Massachusetts law. Based off of the fact that you have to have either a hundred and eighty days of active duty service during peacetime, which we're not currently in, or ninety days during war. War time, which we've been in since late eighties, early nineties, um, and other than training, right? So if you're a reservist or a drilling, um, soldier or, uh, Marine and you go to drill on the weekends and you come home and do your normal job. You know, maybe you're a school teacher and you do that for nineteen years even, you may not be a veteran. Sad to say. I don't ever say that to anyone and, uh, that's one of the worst parts of my job to do, to have to, um, explain to someone. And there's been a lot of lobbying against that, for that, to change. But locally in Easton, we do a lot better than that. And, um, basically I am able to provide you with assistance from the discretionary fund. If you won the uniform for one day and you have a discharge other than dishonorable. So most other benefits don't include you. If you have bad conduct discharge or general discharge, we include those because those folks probably need the most help. You know, rather than the veteran who's got the honorable discharge and, and the full suite of benefits, the folks who, who struggle there are going to need. Quite a bit more assistance arguably. And I'd like to highlight this calendar year, we've distributed a thousand dollars Land Water Farm gift cards. That's something we do every year for veterans and dependents. Land Water Farms donates those. Um, there's an agreement there for them to do so. Farmer's Market coupons from Old Colony Elder Services. Twenty-five of those go out to residents. They're valued at roughly fifty dollars apiece. That changes some years. We had the opportunity to partner with Salvation Army, Legion and VFW to donate and fill a hundred backpacks with school supplies for Easton Public Schools students in need. That were identified by the School Adjustment Counselors. That was a good opportunity to reach those folks. We distributed Walmart Stop and Shop and Roach Brothers gift cards to twenty-five general residents, non-veterans, uh, of all ages. Through donations from St. Vincent to Paul. Partnerships that we have with, with these, like I said, these local churches, organizations, um, they are willing to help. It's a lot of them, it's some of the folks that go to their church, their parishioners that they know need help and this is a way to, to, um, assist them. We've issued over twenty-five hundred dollars in Salvation Army vouchers. Uh, that's full cost paid by the Salvation Army. We have a booklet. Tracy and I have a booklet that we can use to assist with fuel costs, food, furniture and clothing at Salvation Army thrift stores. The food, we write vouchers to West Bridgewater Market Basket. They have an agreement to accept the vouchers. It works great. And fuel. And fuel, I call the oil company, tell them the address to deliver it to, and get authorized the amount, and that's when I hear about, we need more ringers, and then he tells me how much I can pay, and I, the, the resident doesn't need to call the oil company and say that they need to use a voucher. They don't need to call, they just interact with me and I call the companies, which I have a good rapport with, and we get the oil delivered.
So does that mean the, the money that gets collected in Easton by the Salvation Army stays in Easton? Like, what is the correlation to more bell ringers?
It's regional, so.
Okay.
No, he says anywhere. So he says, oh, if you know any bell ringer, they pay bell ringers as well. So if anyone out there who hears this wants, you know, part-time job, get, get a few hours and do some community service, supportive service, please, you know, reach out to Salvation Army locally. But his office is out of Middleborough, it's like a regional, they have regional catchment areas, so may not necessarily be in Easton, or, and the money just gets distributed regionally. So he has like 20 towns that he covers, maybe 15 towns.
Yeah, if you could send that contact information.
Okay.
We can share it around our networks because, you know, I know that high school kids are always looking for service hours and.
Will do.
I mean, I would try to go down there and do it too, and fit that in for a couple hours if it's going to make a difference and help somebody.
Okay.
Mark will come with me. Right?
Yes. I'll go, I'll go too. Thank you.
No, but in all seriousness, there's a lot of people looking to volunteer for things, and that seems like something that would be really meaningful.
Definitely. And they, they just can't absorb the price of fuel. So it used to be 100 gallons because the oil company, they deliver under 100 gallons, the rate changes. Now, the recordings I'm hearing are under 150 gallons, and the rates are, they're high.
Yeah.
So it's higher. We've distributed over $3,000 in Veterans Discretionary Fund Support for Qualifying Veterans. That's this calendar year for that figure. And this calendar year, over $140,000 in Chapter 115 assistance. And we still have the month of December that hasn't been accounted in, within that. And that's across 29 folks, so it's meaningful figures. And then this last number, I usually never use. I'm not, I'm not a terribly huge fan of using this figure just because of what it, what it's for, but we are, regardless, I'm responsible for it. It's $496,212.83 a month that gets deposited across 319 residents that receive VA benefits. Whether I filed those claims for those folks, probably a lot of them, I, I have done some of them. We're responsible to them. I am assigned as their claims agent, and if they have issues with that, they come to me, we help them. That's money that comes in tax-free and goes back into our, our local economy, or has a really good potential to go back into our local economy. They may choose to spend it elsewhere, but they can't help but spend it locally for some items. So I just think that's meaningful to mention.
And it's well deserved.
Yes, absolutely. So that, that's money that's earned through, you know, most, most of them are, you know, folks are rated for service-connected disabilities, injuries, you know, issues that have arisen during service. And then the other big portion of that is service-related deaths, which commonly known as widow's pension, or historically known as that. That's what that, those figures are. So to jump into what, what we can offer for fuel and utility assistance, these are the options on the table here. We have self-help fuel assistance, the income eligibility is to the right. And those figures, so that's number in household. That doesn't necessarily mean your family members or your children and your spouse. That's just number of people in the household. Now, I always joke with people, like, you can't just invite all your neighbors to come live with you for the year, and, you know, they do due diligence to ensure that it's, it's folks in your household, but it's, I think it, it becomes pretty reasonable. And, and this goes, this is coupled with other benefits that are out there as well. But what this does is, through the agency self-help, they process the fuel assistance applications. We onsite, Tracy and I are local representatives for this. They process them in Brockton as well at their offices. But this will place money into your account that you've identified as your utility provider, whether you're electric, it'll go to National Grid. If you're oil, it'll go to your oil company. So you have, you have it on your account and it's loaded automatically. And the season runs from November to the end of April. And during 2020, they extended it to the end of May. So it's pretty good, gets you right almost into the summer at that point, but we still get, do get a few, few cold days in April, but, and then the Salvation Army voucher that I mentioned to you, that's, that's good for a good 350. I've been approved for about $400 once a year. So that can get you, you know, a little over 100 gallons at this point in time, unfortunately. But that has no restrictions. If you're in, you're in need, if you say you're in need for that one, Salvation Army, okay? Self-help, you have to apply, you have to provide documentation. Salvation Army is through my office. We meet, we discuss. I, you know, verify through various means there to make sure that we, you know, there is a need, and then we, we do the application. It's very minimal invasive investigation, I would say. And the R2 discount rate comes back again, that's with National Grid. Usually on your bill, you'll see, they advertise this as, you know, are you eligible? And if you're eligible for Chapter 115, there's a checkbox, you will receive Chapter 115 benefits. You also get this. If you have SNAP, you also get this. So thankfully, a lot of the benefits work together. It's helpful. And again, Good Neighbor Energy Fund, it's slightly over these limits that are, that you'll see here. I don't have those figures in front of me. They are on a case-by-case basis. For food insecurity, we have a lot of good options here. You know, Easton Food Pantry, I'm sure most folks are aware, they've moved to 604 Foundry Street, the rear side of the Fellowship Church. And you see the phone number there, 781-333-6284. The pickup day is Monday, 11:30 to 3:00 PM. You should call if it's your first time to go pick up. And Eastern residency is required for that, and they, they should get you set up there. They deliver in certain cases. We provide transportation in most cases. If you need transportation to the food pantry, we'll get you there through our, our Health and Community Services transportation line. SNAP benefits, the net income has got to be equal to or below the federal poverty line. It's a pretty low, low number, but it, it can be a helpful benefit in addition and in conjunction with the food pantries, and there's all sorts of other benefits that I didn't include on this slide. This is just a brief intro. Salvation Army vouchers for food again, and those gift cards that we have for emergency situations. And then we have bread and pastries that come to Frothingham Hall from Shaw's and Roach Brothers on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it's usually a pretty good selection, especially after holidays, we get a lot of pumpkin pies, a lot of apple pies, things like that. And there's always loaves of bread, bagels. So check that out. Now the Surry Fund. So this is a really exciting part here that I'd like to, to expand upon. So the Surry Fund, I met with, with you all recently and got your support in, in getting this approved for the town. But going back even further, it was a local option that was presented under Mass General Law Chapter 60, Section 3F. And it allowed for towns to place a voluntary donation checkbox on municipal bills for residents to donate in addition to paying the balance that was due. So it's right there on the bill, and we have a way to outreach folks that, you know, use escrow to pay their, their taxes as well. It's modeled very similarly. Luckily, it was given as a local op, it's a local option, so we have local authority over how it's handled. I had designed the application to mirror the Taxation Aid Fund while also meeting the requirements of the UST, the final rule. And obviously, we had a review with Town Council and Department heads through Connor, to you folks. So we're in a good place with that, with that benefit, and it is, it, it, the stars almost kind of align on this one. So 2020, we adopted, it's only eligible for three things, transportation, food, and eating costs for veterans or surviving spouses. So that's all those Chapter 115 folks that buy any of those items, which is every one of them. That is everyone who was on Taxation Aid Fund who is a veteran or surviving spouse of a veteran. That's a lot of people getting fuel assistance that are veterans. So we've kind of just made it so it's, it's a pretty seamless way to get folks the aid they need very quickly. It's ARPA funding eligible, as I stated before. Distribution's planned very shortly here, this winter, I'm hoping, by either directly paying utility companies or reimbursing individuals where it's necessary. There's currently a $100,000 request into Bristol County for ARPA funding. That's working with Connor and Wendy to get that. And so it's 80% of the area median income to qualify, which is very inclusive. It's not, you know, we'd love to, to help everyone, but I think these are very inclusive numbers, starting at $62,600 for one individual. So we can assist folks up to $1,400 per year as the fund allows. So that, you know, it is determined by how much is in that fund, and applicants must apply to receive the funds. The application will be available at Frothingham Hall. I'll make sure it's very clear when that, when that becomes available, and we're ready to go on that. But that should be an interesting, an interesting one to distribute. I think everyone will be in need for that, so that will be a huge help. And it's something that I haven't heard of in any other town, our Town Council had not heard of in any other town, by way of implementing this MGL Chapter 60, Section 3F. It's been implemented in, in a small amount of other towns, but they've done it very similarly to the discretionary fund, which it doesn't really serve another purpose. It almost just doubles down on what that is, which is also a good thing, but, you know, through talks with, with Connor, through talks in our department, and, and, you know, we've come up with a good way to do this, and I think it's going to be very effective. So.
I wanted to.
Corey, if I could just, before moving on to transportation.
Sure. So this is taking, the idea we basically had was that the Tax Aid Committee, which is funded and administered by a committee, but Corey supports that in addition to the hundreds of thousands of support Corey touched on, the Tax Aid Committee distributed $50,000 last year.
Yes.
The current application period, which is closed, they'll be trying to disperse, assuming there's enough applicants, up to 100,000 out of ARPA funds again.
There's enough applicants.
Very good. And this will mirror those qualifications, and, and something that we've all felt internally, and I know the board has echoed, is really, really important, is that there are a lot of, I mean, it's like an alphabet up here, no offense, but there's a ton of statutory programs for folks based on age, based on, you know, medical status, things of that nature, but a lot of ones from the state, you, you need to be in a pretty difficult income posture. And there's a whole lot of people that don't qualify for that. And even just look at the assets, and it's great they're moving it up, but the fact that $8,400 of assets is the new high bar for a veteran for Chapter 115 shows how low those have been. And those systems create negative incentives where you, you can't save money and get out of the situation you're in, right? So we've really tried to find ways where there's a whole lot of folks who are having too high to qualify for a lot of those statutory programs.
Which are still low income, extremely low.
Extremely low.
Yeah, the threshold was way off.
But folks who are, you know, working, I mean, this is a single income of $62,000, you would qualify for this, that you would still have a tough time getting by in Easton or in this region. And so we've tried to find ways to have programs that are much more broadly supportive for, for, you know, working-class people who just have.
In $22,000.
Right. And so I give Corey a lot of credit for that, and Kristin's department a lot of credit for that. And so this is taken together, you know, we're at about a quarter million in ARPA funds that we are planning to distribute through this winter, and we'll be doing more next.
Excellent. Yeah, it's, it's definitely a special thing to be a part of, so, and again, yeah, that's, again, household size, this is key, okay? It's, it's not married or single, like Chapter 115, household size. A family with four, you know, a family of four, $89,400. Again, I know, I mean, to echo what you've said, I know that, that's tight money, especially in Easton and other little local towns, but it's, it's going to be a huge help, and I know a lot of folks will benefit from it.
Much more inclusive.
Yeah, definitely. Much more inclusive than what we're seeing offered by the state and federal benefits that are similar to that. So, and real quick, I wanted to mention, so, I'm sure we're all aware in this room, but just to mention for those at home, 8.7% increase on the federal COLA. That includes all veterans' benefits coming from the VA. The Chapter 115, they do such a great job, Mass Veteran Services. They say, oh, we saw 8.7 in January, we're giving, we're going to give 9% in July. Their budget's in July. They always go above what the federal COLA is. It's awesome. So that's what those folks will have coming, and I can say that with full confidence, that's a low ball, nine, to say that the secretary does a great job of, of getting that money placed where it should be. So, all right, so transportation, you may think, transportation, how does this quite fit into offsetting costs and saving money? And it definitely does. So you'll see here, we have our shuttle bus there with the new sign on the side, Easton Health and Community Services. So our transportation service currently provides rides to residents who meet our eligibility criteria of either, you know, age or disability status. We're in the process of expanding that operation. Kristin, Joe, and I are working along with Connor and support to be able to be more inclusive with what the needs are locally of our residents for all ages and ability levels. So, you know, pricing, we're currently $2 to $4 for a one-way trip to Easton locations, as well as most locations that border Easton. And rides for essential medical, shopping, historically, folks have gone to be able to get their hair done, things like that, just things that are necessary for, for daily living, as well as, you know, some of them could be considered leisure activities, and we'd like to do more as we go. So that's our intent. To book a ride or see if you're eligible, please call Frothingham Hall, 508-230-0690. You'll be prompted, the extension for transportation is two. So that's Bruce Henshaw in the picture there, so. And again, to get back onto property tax assistance, there are abatements that vary all the way up to a full property tax exemption, depending on senior, disability, veteran, or income status. There are a lot of exemptions, so please be sure to see if you qualify, don't disqualify yourself just thinking that you're not eligible. I see too much of that. And review the criteria on the Assessor's webpage. Applicants are also, applications are also available in the Assessor's office and online as well. And then the Taxation Aid Committee, which we had mentioned before, I believe we, we have a high number of applicants this year and will easily distribute that, not easily, I shouldn't say that, we will quickly distribute the funds that have been made available. It's going to be a lot of work for the committee to go through those applications and, and award approved applications there. But again, that's 80% area median income, and you have to be senior or disabled resident of Easton to qualify for that. And currently funded by ARPA, but it's donation-based funding before ARPA funding was available, and it will be thereafter. So we are working to keep that fund alive. And again, that's also advertised on municipal bills. So in closing, I just want to touch on a few things. Like, we realize there's no one-size-fits-all for, for issues that, that folks experience. So we really pride ourselves on, on meeting folks where they're at and helping them with what they're able to do in that moment, and, you know, not overwhelming them, and, because this can be very overwhelming. But what it is, is we really just sit, we sit one-on-one and have a cup of coffee or water, or whatever it is, and we just talk. What's your situation? And we hear the story. And that's Tracy or I, and Lisa is, is becoming a, a large part of that as well. And from that story, we're, we're mapping out, okay, what's this person eligible for? Their income and their assets, you know, what can we do applications for? Instead of making them aware of every single thing, we're thinking, we bear that burden and just have them tell us a story about what they're currently experiencing, as burdensome as that is. We do the backend running around and trying to figure out where, what needs to be filled out, and they bring us their supporting documents, and we go from there. Just keep close with them and follow up, even if it's just to check in and say, still waiting, you know, let us know if you hear anything, and we'll keep you posted, and that means a lot to people. Offsetting costs is the name of the game. If I can save you $100 by signing you up for SNAP benefits, that's $100 I can take off of, you take and put it toward your fuel bill if you weren't eligible for the fuel benefits. A lot of folks may not be able to see that clearly when they're in the midst of financial struggles or any other crisis. You can't think clearly, you have tunnel vision, and things are falling apart around you, and sometimes something that may seem that simple to us sitting here calmly tonight, it's not that obvious, that we can, oh, we can save money on groceries and use that extra money to pay the fuel bill? It, it really, it changes things for them. And the last bullet point I wanted to add, it's always worth checking to see if you apply. I have way too many people that tell me, oh, I'm not eligible, and they are. I call it, you denied yourself out in the parking lot before you even stepped in to apply. So I would just encourage everybody to, to check in and see if they're eligible for benefits out there, because it's not worth leaving that assistance on the table if it's there for you, so. And that covers quite a bit of it. There's, there's a lot more that I could tell, a lot more benefits out there as well[1761.76] Um, there's a lot more benefits out there as well that, that haven't completely been touched on. I didn't touch on tax work-off, uh, program. That's pretty well advertised. We're, we're, we're in the season now, starts November first and goes till next October. And, and folks look to, with the, uh, minimum wage increasing, they look to receive almost close to eighteen hundred dollars off for working a hundred and twenty-five hours times minimum wage throughout that year in departments around town and offices over Frothingham Hall, schools, library, everything. There are a lot of, a lot of opportunities mentioned here tonight and a few that I didn't mention. So please reach out to me if you have any questions. Um, and again, I thank you all for your attention and allowing me to present this to you.
And you have a page on this on the website too with a lot of these too?
Yes, we're working, uh, Kristin, Joe and I revamped our website to, to match our uh, realigning in the department and kind of just focusing, we, you know, our two major buckets. But our department, it really just, it, it's, you know, this, everything, all in one, right? So you come in, you, you maybe having financial struggles, but maybe there's children involved in the picture, right? And we offer programs that support children, programs that support family. Um, something real quick and, and I'll, uh, I'll leave it to you all is like, I, I had thought of with, you know, say you have a gym membership and you go to a studio and do Zumba. Well, maybe we offer that class that you pay that much for. Maybe we offer that over at Frothingham Hall. We do offer Zumba, but maybe we offer the one that you pay X amount of dollars for at, at the local gym. Um, maybe we offer that at a lower rate. So come check that out, uh, depending if you're, on if you're qualified. So again, it's, you don't, you won't receive, um, what you need if you don't ask for it. So I would encourage you to, please reach out and ask for help if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
I'll start with you, Jen. Do you have any comments, questions?
No questions. I just think that, um, the human element that the whole department brings to this process and to engaging at individual levels is really important because like you said, there's that element of the worth checking to see if you qualify and it's not one-size-fits-all, but also the stigma attached. So I guess like you start a conversation, people let their, let the human element come in and realize that, you know, we're all struggling in some way. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. There's no stigma here. It's, it's, you know, and these are amazing programs that like do a fantastic, fantastic job communicating. So thank you for that continued work.
Thank you.
Everything Jen said and more, um, I don't think there's a better person that does what you and your department does anywhere. So thank you on behalf of the town and all of its residents.
Thank you.
I, I can't add any more, Corey. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that I've seen firsthand how you treat people with such compassion and, uh, you know, really, you really make connections with people that are meaningful and helpful. And, um, I just wanted to give just a comment on the Taxation Aid Committee because that was something that you brought forward. Mark and Tom Broussard was trying to push for that also. So that's, um, something that, you know, a select board member came up with that idea and pushed. So I just want to thank you for, uh, hanging on to that because sometimes these things take a little bit longer than, uh, we expect to get them moved through and you really stuck with that. So thank you, Mark. And, uh, thank you and Tracy, both amazing, and, and the rest of your staff. And, um, we hope that people see this and we get some volunteers and more donations to those accounts.
Would love a line out the door, so.
Excellent. All right.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Should we have your board?
So we have one more?
Oh, we do.
Oh, yes.
So we have a discussion and vote to Select Ward Policy Number 53 for the Veterans Discretionary Fund. Um, approval of an emergency expenditure that exceeds the limits of the VSO and the structure of HCS authorization amounts. So out of some, out of that discretionary fund, if there, if there is an expense that exceeds a certain limit, uh, you have the discretion to, to take care of that. And then the board is briefed. Uh, these are all confidential information and, uh, we will vote on the, um, the requested, uh, expenditure above that limit.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, I'm sorry, you wanted me to explain a little bit?
Oh, no, everyone has.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Uh, so somebody would like to make a motion to approve the expenditure um, from the Veterans Discretionary Fund?
Some would, Bajra.
Second, Liam.
Bajra and Liam, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Corey.
Put a plug in for Kristen as well for helping shepherd this department.
Yeah, Kristen's awesome.
Yeah, sorry, I think seven years ago.
That should have been a slide on my slide.
I just look forward to coming back next month and the month after and joining with the other side of the house as accomplishments.
That's good.
All these departments work so well hand-in-hand together and, uh, really complement. So thank you so much, Kristen. All right. Uh, next is the Town Administrator Presentation for the Eastern Community Choice Power Supply Program Savings.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So, um, you know, with the, the tax rate hearing and then the discussion around, uh, these items as well as Green Communities Committee has been touching base of our office on, uh, ways that they can raise awareness around, uh, choices and programs that people can take advantage of in town to, to be, uh, more sustainable, uh, in their choices. I thought it'd be a good time to kind of check in with our Community Choice Aggravation Program, uh, which we're in the second year of. So, uh, for folks who are, uh, not intimately involved in these programs, what is a Community Choice Aggravation Program? It's basically allowing, uh, your local government to act as a purchasing agent to buy electric supply in bulk for the entire community. Uh, the transmission and all that is still handled by the utility company, in our case, National Grid. But the supply, rather than being the basic supply from grid, however they purchase, uh, is bought, uh, at a time for a fixed price and a duration of time, in our case, over three years, uh, for the community. It automatically enrolls everyone. People can opt out at any time at no cost if they want to. Uh, but as we go through the slides tonight, the folks who have opted out, I, I would hope they reconsider and, and jump in. In a municipal aggregation, the community procures the competitive electric supply on behalf of everyone who's in their basic service. Uh, it's voluntary. Again, people get opted in, but they can leave, uh, come and go at any time. They don't get charged fees by the town. The only caveat there is that if you are, uh, someone who, uh, purchased your own supply, people, some people get third-party energy supply contracts on their own. There may be fees with them, but it's outside of our house. We're not aware of that, but that's something you should check. Uh, and again, the utility continues to provide transmission and distribution services. So a little background on how we got to where we are. In order to do a community choice, uh, plan, uh, you can't just unilaterally decide to do so at the town hall. Uh, you follow a regulatory process established in state law and regulations. Uh, so one thing you can do optionally, uh, strongly recommended is bring an energy consultant onboard. Back in my former job as Assistant Town Administrator, I was working with what we called a planning council where we procured a, uh, energy consultant, Colonial Power Group for the OCPC area. That was in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, from there, you prepare a draft plan, uh, and, uh, go to town meeting to get an acceptance of a local statute. Again, that was twenty sixteen. You then prepare an aggregation plan, working with the Department of Energy Resources and the State Department of Public Utilities. Again, super helpful having a consultant. Uh, you have public hearings, allow people to weigh in on it. Uh, and then the Select Board adopts an aggregation plan, which happened in Easton twenty seventeen, goes to the state, the Department of Public Utilities review, uh, before finally being adopted, which in our case was twenty eighteen. We actually did not purchase, uh, energy exactly in twenty eighteen because, uh, uh, grid basic rates at that time were, uh, reasonable. Uh, so we had the plan in place, we're ready to act, but we kept an eye on the market, uh, which we decided to do in February of two thousand and twenty, which put us on a fixed rate from November twenty twenty through the coming November next year. So how is that program actually fair? In short, uh, very well. What you see on the screen here, uh, the flat line starting in November of two thousand and twenty is our, uh, the Eastern Community Choice Supply Cost, which is just over ten cents per kilowatt hour. That's been locked in place since November of two thousand and twenty and will stay that way until next November of two thousand and twenty-three. The blue line you see there is National Grid's basic supply. As we go through, this is going to look like I'm picking on National Grid. I'm not, uh, but you will notice here, uh, National Grid's supply rate has varied from below of nine cents per kilowatt hour in summer of twenty-one. The current, the direct, almost thirty-four cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, our community choice supply cost has been cheaper than end grid basic in four out of five of these six-month billing periods so far. And so what does that translate to? So again, this is from November two thousand and twenty through June of the current year. Uh, not getting into winter yet, which we will. Those first twenty months of the program, the aggregate savings on utility costs for the account holders at Easton was two million dollars saved, uh, from November twenty twenty through this June. Uh, so I average opening at about two hundred and eighty-five dollars per account, which, uh, is not nothing, but we're talking about.
It's a lot.
Expenses with taxes, other costs going up. Um, and it is actually better, I believe, than what we were forecasting back in two thousand and twenty. So the program's been humming along and, and again, you see two quarters there where it was actually slightly more expensive. Uh, but this is again on the scale for seven thousand rate old payers paying forty-seven thousand more in the course of three months. But in almost all quarters, there's been meaningful savings. So this program was very well, um, and was providing value for the community for, uh, the invasion of Ukraine and destabilization of energy markets. And it's going to be paying particularly dividends for folks this winter. So due to a variety of economic geopolitical forces, energy costs, as everyone here is well aware, have skyrocketed, skyrocketed, uh, including for electric supply. Um, that has grown the disparity between the basic supply costs from grid and other utility companies compared to Easton's fixed rate, uh, which thereby increases the relative savings. So if you look here, this is a standard mailer. Every six months, our consultant under the DP regulation sends a mailer to anyone who is in Easton and has not yet either been absorbed into the Community Choice Plan uh, or, uh, left. And that says, hey, look, this is what the rates are going to be for supply in the next six months with National Grid. In this case, it's almost thirty-four cents per kilowatt hour, whereas our programs, both standard and one-hundred percent renewable are about ten cents. So that goes out of the six months. So when we look at those rates, what we can forecast in the next six months in the billing period we're all in right now, which is November of twenty-two through April of twenty-three, the average home in Easton, and this is a conservative number, particularly with the speed all the holiday lights people have on their house. Uh, if you're using six hundred kilowatt hours per month, your energy supplies will be a hundred and forty-one dollars cheaper per month, every month, compared to had you not done this program and if you were in end grid basic. So again, six hundred kilowatt hours a month in the next end grid billing period through April, you'll get about eight hundred and fifty dollars for every home in Easton saved compared to, uh, had you not done this program on energy supply. And what that nets to roughly seven thousand accounts in Easton is, uh, between now and May, there will be, uh, five point seven million dollars in this town not spent on energy supply, um, which is really great. We obviously can't take credit for how unstable the market has become and nor would we want to because there's still a huge amount of economic suffering that that causes. But it is a very rare, uh, that we get to truly cut costs on something. Uh, and the current volatility in the energy markets has really created a, a dynamic where, uh, what was good planning and good economic planning to save, uh, meaningful, but not dramatic amounts over time and to provide, uh, pricing stability will, will be really creating, I mean, we, we're just talking about tax increases of, you know, four hundred, five hundred per year. This is saving eight hundred and fifty in the next six months on energy, which is really a wonderful opportunity. So, uh, that coupled with the program performance to date will push us close to eight million in utility savings for the community. A point that I, I'd like to highlight, so when we rolled this program out, um, there, the energy markets have always fluctuated. Uh, we used to get those, uh, nice line graphs. And many times though, we were talking going between nine and maybe thirteen cents a kilowatt hour. That was considered dramatic, uh, four years ago in the winter. And so when the town was drafting this program back in seventeen and eighteen, uh, we chose to go with a basic aggregation and with an optional one-hundred percent renewable, uh, product. And that, the differentiation there, when rates were much, much lower, maybe could have been a kind of economic difference maker for folks. But right now, the, that kind of order of magnitude of savings that I just spoke about on the previous slide would still apply if you opted into one-hundred percent renewable supply. So we only have about forty accounts in Easton that have opted into this. It is, uh, a fraction of a penny more, right? So if you look at what end grid basic right now is about thirty-four cents per kilowatt hour. Our basic community choice is ten point three cents and our one-hundred percent renewable is about ten point four cents. So we'll still be saving well in excess of one hundred dollars per month. Um, it's effectively a rounding error compared to Easton's community choice. Uh, and it's still less than one-third the cost of grid basic supply. And so everyone who, most people watching this, uh, I think sixty-eight hundred out of seven thousand account holders in Easton are on our plan. Almost anyone watching this statistically is in the basic plan. If you go to our, uh, plan's website, which is colonialpowergroup.com/easton, you can click a couple of buttons, uh, and you'll get switched into renewable supply. Takes about a month, but you'll see it reflected on the back of your end grid bill. They'll show that supply, build from Dynegy, and there's no fees. I'm not trying to sound like a salesman here, uh, but there's no fees. That was very important in a plan design, as the board members will remember. If you're in the aggregate plan, ready to go into one-hundred percent renewable. So people can, uh, switch into renewable energy supply for their home and still save meaningful amounts of money compared to grid basic. Um, so that's, uh.
And if you, I've had people who, they opted out and they regret opting out and they want to opt back, they want to opt in. So that's, that's colonialpowergroup.com backslash easton.
Slash easton, yes. And, and there's, uh, again, you know, I wouldn't try and time the market on this probably ever. Uh, as we've seen overwhelming amount of time this program has been, end grid. But, uh, right now, it's not even, it shouldn't, there's no economic justification to not give.
Absolutely.
Shot. You can go in and out. Um, again, there, there's a lag time usually for a billing cycle or so, but there's no fees on your, again, I wouldn't recommend going in and out during the month.
Understood.
There's no fees. And again, I have the asterisk, so if you have a party supply contract, we can't speak to that. I, I don't know what those rules are for folks if they have their own supply contract. But there are a few people do. Most people are in grid basic. And for one reason or another, you opted out of the town program, you can come back in. And we strongly recommend it, uh, given this.
Right. Uh, and another question that I've had is people, uh, they never opted out, so they're automatically in. But they don't believe me when I tell them they're automatically in. Can they go to this and see that they're in? And, and that's, I understand that, like my father, for example.
On the back of their bill.
Yeah, but they want, okay.
It will show them, it will, it'll get as specific as saying, I think it says Eastern Community Choice. And it should list Dynegy, Texas, where the supply is from. And you'll be able to compare the rates.
Okay.
It'll be ten cents and change per kilowatt hour versus thirty-three. So that's on the back of everyone's end grid bill. And if for some reason they're having any issues, uh, they can go to this website. There is a number to speak with Colonial, or they could call our office, the system as well.
Great.
Uh, but I think I really wanted to, to make a point, and I, I know, I believe I'll be going through your Communities Committee conference as well, that only forty, give or take, accounts are on the one-hundred percent renewable. And right now, particularly in the next six months, uh, folks can make a decision that helps, uh, further sustainability goals, reduces their carbon impact and still saves a dramatic amount of money, right? A lot of times, things are shifting based on market forces, based on federal and state legislation. But there has always been a discussion with sustainability of, uh, if only I could do this sustainable thing if we're not for the additional cost burden it creates. And that's very true in some instances, but this is one where people can make a difference with the power they're consuming and so save. So we wanted to highlight that. So looking ahead, our contract ends in November of twenty twenty-three. Hopefully the market is more stable at that point. We'll be in touch with Colonial Power Group. And they basically said this point is so, things are so all in the map. Let's talk in this great summer. Uh, we'll be coming back to the board and looking at markets and seeing what our options are. I'm going to assume that, love to be wrong, but I'm going to assume that ten cent per kilowatt hour after multi-years will probably not happening again. Uh, again, I love to be wrong, but, uh, you know, a lot of timing and we, we worked hard on this, but timing and luck also came together. And that's going to be saving, uh, millions of dollars for our folks in the, in the program. So I'll be back, uh, before the next calendar year is over. And hopefully we have, uh, something that is still, uh, performing, uh, is going to the market. But, uh, it's going to be a great program. I'm really happy with its performance. I'm really happy that this is something that's providing some level of relief, uh, right now with the cost of nearly everything going on. And that's the website if anyone's watching it. All again, it's colonialpowergroup.com/easton. All again, it's colonialpowergroup.com/easton. So if there's any questions, there are yet.
I think that's great news. Anything we can do to share information, you know, through the town social media channels and Town Crier, and just word of mouth to our friends on social media, and older people that we know as well, you know, like you said, your parents, your dad. So, thank you, Connor. We did a good job on that one. The next thing we have is the Recreation Commission Appointment. I'm sorry, nope, the Town Administrator Municipal Facilities Replacement Update.
I don't have anything significant there, the schematic designs aren't really, that's a lot of kind of just on the groundwork, geotag meeting departments, Municipal Building Committee did meet last week, and they're going to start meeting again regularly as that project advances, but nothing major to update at this time.
Okay, great. Next is the Recreation Commission Appointment for Michelle Durant, with a term expiration of June 30th, 2025. Michelle was on the Recreation Commission before. She did not apply to reapply when her term expired because she wanted to give somebody else a chance. They still don't have enough members, and so she is going to offer to fill that term again. So thank her for
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank her for serving before, and thank her for coming back again. And if somebody wants to make a motion to appoint Michelle with the term expiration of June 30th, 2025?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, and that's a roll call vote.
Bodger Durant.
Lamb Durant.
Stacy Durant.
And Full Janetti Durant. Excellent. Acceptance of resignation from Christopher Anderson for the Planning and Zoning Board, with the term expiration of June 30th, 2024. We want to thank Christopher for his time on the board, he's done a great job, and we will accept his resignation with regret. If I could get a motion, a second, and a roll call on that?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger Anderson.
Lamb Anderson.
Stacy Anderson.
And Full Janetti Anderson. And next is the acceptance of the Stonehill College Annual Gift.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So Stonehill College presented to the town the gift of $40,000, which is kind of sort of their typical annual gift. We drafted a letter of thanks to college, prepared for a board signature, and in accordance to a longstanding practice, I'm recommending that we allocate the gift, as we have in the past, between Easton Public Schools, the library, and help in various services. And I deserve half of that gift for use each term later. And the year board is occasionally use it to basically function as a small grant fund that you administer to some of our boards and committees for some of their projects that they work on. We can lean on this for consultant studies that are kind of one-off that advance the priorities of the board and the town that we don't necessarily budget for in the future.
Okay, well, we're grateful for this gift and for the partnership with Stonehill. They are very good to work with. If somebody would like to make a motion to accept this gift and appropriate it as is mentioned in our packet?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, next we have the acceptance of the minutes from November 14th.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next is Town Administrator Notes.
None of her, just want to say thank you to Elizabeth. She has been very on top of it since day one here, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any Select Board Notes? Greg?
No, I have none right now.
I have none.
None neither.
I just want to thank the Lions Club and the Easton Women of Today, the Easton Cultural District. I know I'm going to forget people, the schools, the people that coordinated the parade this weekend, the Rain Dog Parade, and all the activities that happened Sunday. So luckily, it was Sunday, because Saturday would have been a really cold, wet day to be up there. But thank you to everybody, we have such wonderful volunteers in this community, and they do come out and make some special events here. So thank you to everyone who did that and was a part of it. So if there is nothing else, we do have listed here a possible executive session, but we don't have the, we don't, it's, we don't have the
It's not, it's ready yet.
Yeah, it's not ready for us to discuss yet. So we will not be having an executive session tonight. And with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.